I'll just move down there fast.
No, he's a, he's set up.
Well.
I was making some of these people.
That, uh, first one. Well, that one they got to ask. But I don't know if this is just.
Yes. And yeah.
I think one of them may be, uh, flag variant. Their attorney has to appear. That was definitely.
The, uh, we for sure need to announce to the people if anybody does, if anybody does continue or.
Actually flag, flag man.
Make sure everybody knows.
Number four would be.
We're not going to hear cases. They're not going to hear.
We'll let you call it over. Well, however you want to do it. What, we want to have put on the record though that you're, you're going to be acting. Tonight, this might be just a quick vote. For that, just in performance, it's, you know, your, uh, regular co-chair, uh, or vice chair. And then we can do however you want. So your call, if you want to swear people in first, or you want to do that. Okay. Okay.
You'll probably, you'll probably have to hold mine.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, thanks for showing up here at the zoning board. Uh, before we get started, obviously our regular chairman is not here today and we're going to do a quick vote on who's going to be chair tonight. And then we'll get everybody who's going to speak tonight this morning. So for vote.
A nominee is come.
Uh, second that nomination.
All four.
Aye.
All may, may, no cares. So obviously y'all can tell I'm not the regular chairman. So now that's, uh, the way, everybody that wants to speak tonight, please stand so Mr. Haywood could swear you guys in.
And if you'll raise your right hand, y'all swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you guide. Alright, thank you.
Jamie said that, uh, that Walton, Walton Apartments is going to go.
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, that there's some confusion. I, I was suggesting that the board hear out the, um, the matter to some degree. What, what we have is this is a continuance from, uh, approximately two months ago. Uh, the matter was being resolved or attempted to be resolved by, uh, Mr. Kramer and a Mr. Laird, who were the, uh, applicants, uh, for the appeal. Uh, there are some additional owners who claim they have standing. They have an attorney. They filed or prepared a letter requesting, uh, a continuance. They have an attorney here tonight. The attorney for Walton Apartments is here as well, and then staff has also looked at it. So I, I would at least at a minimum suggest that the board listen to, uh, staff, the attorney for the, uh, owners who have, uh, who prepared and filed a letter today, as well as, uh, the representative for Walton Apartments.
Sounds good, ma'am. Yes, Father God. Let everybody stand up for indication.
If you would, uh, bow your heads, please. Father God, we come to you right now and ask, uh, ask that you would be with us, that you would lead us, guide us, and that you would protect us. We thank you for the opportunity to live in the beautiful place that we do, to be able to call this our home. We're truly blessed and we're thankful for that great opportunity. We've made this our home. We ask Father that you would bless our actions today, that, that, uh, the voices of our people would be heard and that we would listen. We would listen to one another and that from that listening, we would all grow in wisdom. We pray, Father, that everything that we do would be done in accordance to your will and by the example of your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. We ask all these things and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice overall.
So first, uh, is, uh.
No, that's it. You're, you're actually on the right one.
So ladies and gentlemen, for the Walton Apartments.
Do you, do you want to hear from staff first?
No.
You want to hear the project side first or the neighbors?
Either one. Good evening, Chairman and Board. Thank you for agreeing to hear us. Uh, my name's Justin Remo. I'm an attorney. Twenty-five Beale Parkway, Fort Walton Beach Dowell Law Firm. We represent three owners, uh, the Stark subdivision, Chris and Lucy Sennett, Edward Lewis, Burton Brunson. Now what's happened is, uh, Mr. Kramer and, uh, Mr. Laird filed an appeal, as you know, having to do with the express easement. Uh, they filed that appeal on behalf of all owners, and I have a copy of the appeal here. If, if you don't have one, uh, may I approach and hand it?
Turn it to the.
Okay. I believe the board has it in your packet. It's the, uh, uh, letter dated August twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen.
And you'll see that the, the appeal, while it, it's technically correct that the, uh, the parties that signed the appeal are Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird, they did file on behalf of all the ownership in that subdivision. Now, I understand since the time of the filing of that appeal, there's been a settlement reached between Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird and the developer. That settlement did not involve the, the other owners and, uh, didn't have notice of it. So we would just simply ask that this matter be continued over until such time as the other owners can come forward, possibly at the next meeting, to, uh, to be heard on the issue. Uh, that's, that's our request tonight. Sort of a due process concern. We just want to be heard.
Okay.
Are there any questions you have of me? I'm happy to answer anything I can. Okay, thank you.
Have y'all had, had communication with the, uh, the other two parties? Are y'all open with them and discussing this back and forth?
The letter that was sent, uh, today was also sent to Mr. Peterman who's here and, uh, the other, the other people indicated on the letter. I spoke to Mr. Peterman before, uh, this meeting. He indicated that he, he would oppose the continuance. Um, I'll, I'll let him speak to that, but just fundamental due process. We just, this is a property right that everyone in that, that neighborhood had, and before it, it, it's, goes away or it's taken away, we just asked that, you know, we'd be heard out on it.
Were y'all involved in those discussions between the two sides? Because I believe we had that continuance form before so that they could try and resolve things between them. Have y'all been involved in that?
We were not involved in negotiations with, uh, Mr. Mr. Kramer, Mr. Laird and the developer, not, not that I'm aware of at all.
And then the other question I would have for you is, you're representing three.
That's correct.
And that's two. The other two guys.
Yeah, yes, they're, they're two. Mr. Kramer, Mr. Laird.
It's five. How many houses people are involved in this?
I don't have the exact number. There's quite a bit more owners than five. And I don't know, I can't speak for the other owners, but I would speculate, and it is speculation to be candid, uh, that they're similarly situated to my three clients. And they may want to be heard also.
So we could find ourselves in another month with another group of people that want to be heard as well? How does that?
Well, uh, what I suggest is allow, uh, Mr. Peterman, uh, and staff to, to give you their take as well, and then we can definitely, uh, talk about your concerns.
Yeah, definitely. I hear everybody, I hear what everybody has to say.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'm Rick Peterman. I'm an attorney representing Rose Star, which is the, the developer of this Walton project. As you know, this is, uh, the, the appeal that we have obtained a dismissal of, started back in August of last year, and we've, Rose Star has done a lot of work, but only with Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird, who are the named parties in the appeal. Uh, and we've worked out something that has resolved all those issues. With regard to due process, it certainly wouldn't be our intention to deny, deny anybody due process, but we have due process rights as well. We dealt with the people who appealed, uh, and we've dealt with them for months and we've satisfied them. Mr. Remo's clients are not named anywhere. There's no agency form or other document evidencing that Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird had any authority to take any actions on their behalf. It's kind of like take the other side of the pancake. If they did have authority to act on behalf of these folks, then they've dismissed the appeal. Uh, our position is that the Kramer and Laird appeal was dismissed by Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird. If, uh, other owners out there have rights or due process rights, we certainly wouldn't deny them every opportunity to pursue every right that they have under the ordinances and under the Florida law. But they can't claim just because Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer put something on their appeal, says we're representing everybody out there, uh, that they were, that they were involved in this appeal at all, because they weren't. So we would just like the Kramer Laird appeal to be dismissed. If something else comes along, then we're prepared to deal with it.
Who, um, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
When, when, uh, Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird, when they got together and they had their differences and what have you, and they came upon themselves, you mentioned about encompassing everybody. In that field, to remember right, it was strictly between those two parties, am I right?
That's right. That's the only people we've ever dealt with on any of this.
So you haven't had any contact with any of the gentleman's.
No, sir.
Clients or anything.
None whatsoever.
Mr. Peterman?
If, if I might.
You said you resolved the matter with Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer, correct?
We have.
Had they said that they, did at any point, did they say they represented other owners or they need to get permission from the other owners?
Never.
Would you have resolved the matter only with Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer, had you known or they represented that they, they in fact, uh, had authority to represent other owners?
Absolutely not. It wouldn't have been a complete resolution of the issues.
Okay, thank you.
Martin Davis on behalf of the staff. The, the problem of course is we don't have anything in our records that indicate that Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer were representing these folks on that one, those folks on the one line in the, in the appeal. However, we have a form that I know Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird are very familiar with. It's called the agent form, where people who are being represented by a third party can designate. Often you see engineers up here, for instance. They'll get a form that we provide them that says you can represent my interests before the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Board or whatever. But that form simply was never filled out or filed by Mr. Kramer, by Mr. Laird, or anyone else for that matters, in this matter. So it's the staff's position that we had an appeal from Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer. It's been dismissed and we're done.
So I'll come back.
I, I have to respectfully disagree. I'm looking at the, the agenda. This would be the second document that I'm aware of, becoming familiar with the case today. Says, uh, David Kramer and Hal Laird, the appellants by and through all homeowners in Magnolia Bay and Stark subdivisions. So there's at least two places where they've said it. And I understand what the technical rules are that staff is speaking of and all that, but if you look at it from the perspective of the other homeowners, they think that, that someone's appealing on their behalf and is speaking for them before this board based on the people who are speaking before the board's own writings. And I think it would be unfair to foreclose those people's opportunity to be heard because of really what are the misstatements potentially of Mr. Laird and, uh, Mr. Kramer, right? That the owners felt that they were being represented here by two people. Those two people have resolved their differences unilaterally with the developer without consultation with the other owners. And therefore, it's appropriate this board hear the other owners before a final determination is made. And so we would ask that you continue the matter. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Yvonne Payne. I'm a homeowner resident.
Could you stand it up there?
Where Rose Star is doing his work. And I don't, I don't. What do you want? My name's Yvonne Payne at Lot sixteen. I don't know how they, uh, Rose Star got the original okay to go building. In my paperwork and my deed, I don't know who to give it to, I highlighted that, uh, there's a sixty-six foot. And also there's covenant saying there cannot be anything over two stories, single family in that subdivision. So I feel that the county by not using due diligence has somewhat let me down. I mean, now we have veil threats that we will have, we'll lose our easement and, uh, it, that, that pig trail that we've been traveling on, it's been there for more than twenty-five years. And just even if it were a prescriptive easement or adverse possession, we should have something to say about that. But it, it is definitely not sixty-six feet wide either. And that, we have gone to the county in the past and asked them, we've had problems with a culvert problem, and they did come and fix that once. But they said since it's not theirs, they cannot work on it.
Ms. Payne, Justin, do you represent Ms. Payne or is she not one of the?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
No.
And what I would, uh, recommend that the board consider, I mean, right now you have, you need to consider whether or not you want to go with staff's position that the appeal is been dismissed by Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer, or you may, uh, you need to make a decision if you're going to go with Mr. Remo's suggestion that it should be continued. I mean, I don't think either one of the parties, uh, is ready to be heard tonight. So before we dig into, uh, too deep into Ms. Payne's, uh, information, I would, you may want to make that kind of foundational decision of is there an appeal or not? And then if there is, then whether or not you want to continue it.
Right.
But that, excuse me, that is recognized apparently by the county. They pick up our garbage. We get mail in there. And so that's how they egress.
But Ms. Payne, that's, um, I understand your concern and everything, but that's not relevant. This is really not relevant to what our issue is here tonight. This is an appeal on, on, on whether or not, uh, staff and these two people and the two plaintiffs.
Your, your mic must not be on. What isn't relative?
It's, this is about, can you, everybody here? This is about an appeal of two people that have already tried to dismiss what they're talking about and what they're doing. The other gentleman, I'm sorry, I can't.
Justin.
Justin. He, he brought up the point about some other people in the subdivision that he represents, and he wants to continue it. Uh, Mr. Peterman, on the other hand, it's already been dismissed. And so that's why, this is what we're talking about right now. One suggestion I would have is to call the, talk to the, um, building department. That's, this sounds like what they need to be talking about.
Alright. So we have to bring a, a suit? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, ma'am, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I would, at first I would just go talk to either your county commissioner or the Walton Building, I mean, not the building department, but the road department. Go talk to them. They're, they'll be.
The road department, I have talked to them. And they say they can't do anything in there because it's.
Is the county maintained? Is the roadway here county maintained?
No, it's not county maintained. People have talked about being dedicating it to the county, but now since it's, everything seems to be questionable about what's what. But, you know, the law is that you can't land lock parcels of land. And in my own case, and neighbors, there's health reasons that, you know, we have to be able to get in and out as possible. I, I've had to call the, the police because I was trying to get out to the doctor and they had the road all blocked up. So. That's my concern is how did they ever get the okay to build?
Well, it's obviously they had a development order.
Which one?
We got three out here.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Chris Sennett and, uh, I'm one of the property owners. I've had many conversation with Mr. Kramer. I've talked to him on, on many occasions. And at all times, I was under the impression, according to what he told me and possibly other people, that we were represented by, by him, that in fact he was, what he was bringing up to the board was on behalf of all of us. So whether our name is expressly stated as, you know, people having contention with this issue may, may not be of my realm, but our impression was that we were in fact being represented and we were in fact being part of this discussion. Obviously, nobody's contacted us at all since that. So whether the fact that Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird have settled, still, we have not had a chance to, to continue the issue because nobody's contacted us at all.
Were, were you aware that they had already settled amongst themselves?
Uh, afterwards, but initially, you know, again, when, when we talked and when we had many discussions, you know, he hadn't settled yet. So I just found out very recently. I spoke to him and he said he had settled at that point and he encouraged me to continue. That's what we're doing here. We're hoping to continue this, this, uh, this issue and have it alive and not be just shut down because some of us have not had a chance to resolve these, these issues.
I got you.
Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Burton Brunson at three fifty-five Bay Magnolia. And I also had conversations with Kramer and Hal, stating to us that they were trying to help our community and our neighborhood in getting things done so that we would have a nicer road and have things done to benefit the entirety of the neighborhood. Not in the fact that we were a part of their team or a part of their suit. But again, they said that they were trying to do things on our behalf as well, to help the entire neighborhood. They helped themselves and they left us hanging.
So what, let me ask you this. What do you think needs to be done? In your, in your opinion, not speaking for anybody else, but in your opinion.
Um, we would like, um, a nice safe easement to and from our neighborhood. I would like y'all to come out and take a ride down our road and see what it's like and see what kind of work they've done to what was a nice, peaceful, quiet, beautiful little neighborhood. And I dare to say not a one of you would want to travel down that road on a daily basis. Much else have this enormous apartment complex next to you. Especially it being a section eight housing. There are tons and tons of negative aspects of it. We just want to protect what we have. You know, we're not, we're not trying to, to get money from them. We're not trying to be shady. We just want to live our normal lives in a safe neighborhood.
Yeah.
I can't imagine you'd want anything different. Anything else?
No, anybody?
I had, I had a question for counsel. There is, I'm assuming there's a timeframe that everybody has to appeal by?
Yes, I believe it's, uh, thirty days after the decision is made by the building department.
So then all of these people would have had to have appealed.
Correct.
Yes, a, a, and I think that's one of the main issues from staff's position is that the only application they received or notice, and it wasn't even an application, but the, the letter you saw was dealing with Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird. So that's who they, they had. I believe the language in the notice, they probably pulled just from kind of the signature block, you know, that, uh, to, to indicate you'd have to, you'd have to ask staff on that, on, on how the actual notice is crafted. But, um, correct. So you, normally if someone doesn't appeal within thirty days, they lose their right to appeal to this board. That does not mean they can't seek action through a court of law if they feel that they've got a legal basis to, uh, contest the matter.
Just so that there's a, a record on our time schedule of what we knew and when we knew. We didn't know any of this was going on until two months ago when they both approached us and asked us to come and be here to support them, to help with our neighborhood. So, I mean, it was never discussed with us. We didn't know what was going on until that was two months ago from tonight, when you guys kicked it over for another two months. So this is all new to us. We don't, we don't know what's being done. We don't know what's being done with the easement. Is it staying? Is it moving? Are we going to get an easement? I wanted to sell my house right now. I don't have an easement in my home.
Can I ask you, are, are you represented by Jason?
Justin.
Justin, I'm sorry.
Justin, yes, sir, I am.
You're, you're represented by Justin. So you're one of the three property owners that's represented by Justin? And, uh, uh, you say you were made aware that Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer were coming here on behalf of you and the rest of your neighbors?
They said what they were doing was going to, we're going to, was going to benefit us.
And did they, did he or either one of those two gentlemen tell you about the meeting, meetings that were going on here?
Just the one.
Ask y'all to attend?
Just the one, the last one two months ago.
Just out of curiosity, did you or any of the other folks that you know of that are affected by this, this decision? Are, were, were any of y'all here two months ago?
Yes.
Were y'all here?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Correct, Chris Sennett, who just spoke before me and myself were here.
Okay. My, my question then for, for you is, is if they name two names and then blanket the rest of the neighborhood.
I'm on that sheet.
And, well, I'm, I'm looking on.
My name isn't, but I'm on that sheet.
Right, well, you're one of the neighbors.
Exactly.
Can- can the two of them dismiss?
Well, a- and I think that's- that's part of the issue that this board's gonna need to decide. Uh, assuming that Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer did have proper authority to represent the other homeowners as- as they represent. Then they would have the authority to dismiss the matter as well.
As far as the other homeowners went, were approached, they weren't in a financial position to participate in this?
Interesting, I'm trying to answer Mr. Dixon's question. What I'm getting at is, you either need to decide whether or not Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer did represent the other owners. If they did, and they asked to have the matter dismissed, and they didn't get with the other owners, and the other owners may have a cause of action against Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer. Okay, that's not for you to decide tonight. Uh, if you're saying they didn't have the authority to represent the other owners, then, you know, then you have what they're trying to say. They're- it sounds as though they said, look, we knew Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird were out there doing these things, and we thought they were taking care of us, and then the next thing we know, the- they're asking for it to be dismissed. Well, we weren't part of the settlement discussions, okay? Well, I can't- you know, that wasn't our fault. We, you know, we weren't in those settlement discussions either. But if you're- and that's why the county, the staff, have people fill out those agency forms. So we know who you represent. That way, someone can't come up here and represent on, you know, Mr. Senate's behalf or Mr. Brunson's behalf, and then they have this situation here. So, uh, I think from a legal perspective, if Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird are deemed to be the representatives for themselves, as well as the other similarly situated homeowners, and they ask for the matter to be dismissed, you have the ability to dismiss the matter. Uh, if the other homeowners don't like that and don't believe that Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer did, you know, uh, perform their duties, you know, for- for the other homeowners, then they have a cause of action against them. You know, I- I'm not saying they do or they don't, I'm just saying that, you know, if I represent a client and I go do something that's not in that client's best interest, I have a fiduciary duty, just like Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird would normally have a fiduciary duty to represent those other homeowners. And if, uh, they run afoul of that, then there is potentially a cause of action against, uh, those gentlemen. Again, I don't know whether or not that's the case, but, uh, you've heard staff's position, you've heard Mr. Remmel's position. I don't know if there's anybody else besides Mr. Brunson and Mr. Senate that wish to speak, or if you have any other questions.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I- I believe that, uh, Mr. Dykes has brought up kind of the issue of, uh, you've heard of a class action, right, where there's one representative of an entire class of people that comes before the court suing on behalf of all the similarly situated. Well, in those types of cases, the members of the class have to opt in. And if there's a settlement offer, the, uh, members of the class get a letter in the mail that says, hey, this is what the settlement is, you in or you out? That didn't happen here. Um, I speak from experience, my wife bought a Volkswagen and we just went through the whole Volkswagen recall. Um, so, there is- there is the concept of representatives of a class giving notice to the members of the class, the members of the class in writing, affirming whatever the resolution may be or agreeing not to be a part of it, and something being filed in- in a court case where the members of that class show that they've- they've agreed to a settlement or- or whatever. Now, I know we're not specifically talking about a class action here, but that's the closest example in the law that I can think of, and it seems to fit. So again, we would just ask that these owners be heard. This is the most efficient place to deal with this issue, the most cost-effective place to deal with this issue. And we would ask that the board just consider that and allow these owners to put their two cents on before final decisions made.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If- if you weren't represented by Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer, then would you not have only had thirty days to have contested it back? This was- this started, and I think we did a continuance, their first continuance in- before Christmas?
Uh, I think it was like in October or August, October of twenty sixteen.
So would you have missed your deadline to- to have brought a case forward if you didn't? If you're not a part- if you're not in with them, then would you not have- shouldn't you have done it then?
I- I understand your question. I think that's a- that's a valid point to raise, and I'll have to defer to, uh, Mr. Dykes about the time periods and all that. I've- I've known- known him for a while, I think he's probably telling the truth.
Yeah.
But, if you're relying on two people to represent your interests, and in fact, those two people have reported to represent your interests before this board, then I think you've got- you've got a legitimate argument that you- you- you did appeal because two people did it for you, and they said they did it for you, and then they asked you to come to a meeting and stand with them while they fought for you. And then, when it's time to settle, you're not- you're not included or not consulted about it. And- and that- that seems to be the rub here. So, we just want to be heard. That's- that's it.
Yeah, I'll, uh, just for the record, the- the letter we received on Mr. Kramer's letterhead was August twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, so it likely would have came- either came before this board in October or probably the- the latest November of twenty sixteen would have been.
Where- where is the document that says that they- that they want to dis- dismiss their suit?
Oh, uh, that's here. That was up, uh, I thought on the diocese for you. It's actually two emails. Uh, I'll just hand you mine. One email is, uh, from Mr. Laird. The other email is, uh, from Mr. Kramer. One is dated April- well, actually, both dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, I did. I'm sorry.
And then you also have up on the diocese, uh, the Dowd Law Firm, where, uh, Mr. Remmel works, uh, their letter that I've mentioned earlier.
Anybody have anything else?
I guess the only question I've got for you-
Yes, sir.
You're wanting a continuance for what? For what reason? I mean, what- what's gonna be brought in a month that can't be said or heard tonight?
There's issues about the, uh, so, my understanding is there's two easements here, right? We've got- there's a prescriptive easement that's been acquired through continuous use over a legal period of time. And then there's an express easement, which is the subject that we're here about, this express easement. Written down and recorded in the public records, and now it's going away because of- of the settlement or whatever. There's erosion issues with respect to the prescriptive easement that we want to be heard on, have to do with the flow of water. My understanding is that it's- it's soggy right now. I drove it the other day, uh, Monday, uh, in my car and I had to back up. I ended up going down it. Uh, now granted, I have a- a little four-door sedan, so it's not kind of the car you should probably be driving on the road with, but these types of issues. Another one is, uh, the- the apartment complex is built right up on the boundary of, uh, one of my property owner's lots. There's no buffer. Uh, it's right up on the line. They cleared all the land right up to it. Some of these issues that are kind of quality of life type issues, and I- I think they're- they're capable of being resolved. But if we- you know, the next step involves significant expense to everyone involved, and these people thought they were being represented here by two individuals who- who ended up, you know, unilaterally kind of settling, and now we're just kind of left with our issues. And so, we'd like to put them before you so you can make a decision about it.
And you're not prepared to?
No, sir, not- not today, I'm not, but I will, whenever this committee- this board wants to meet again, we'll be here with- with bells on, ready to go.
And what I would add is, some of those things are not things that are within your purview. You- you as a board are not to determine whether or not a prescriptive easement has been determined or granted under the law. Those are- those are questions of law.
Yeah, there's a lot- there's more to a prescriptive easement than- than word prescriptive.
Yeah, so, uh, what I'm getting at is, and even some of the quality of life issues, you know, it- this board is to look at whether or not the building department did what it was supposed to and whether or not, you know, the granting of the permits were done properly under the- the land development code and the ordinances that are, you know, established here in this county.
And that's one of the issues that we would speak to. Uh, the- the express easement that was done away with in lieu of this, uh, I gather it's a sixty-six foot easement. I have seen Mr. Peterman's letter. Uh, express easement is recorded in the public records. That's constructive notice to everyone in the world that you have an easement. Mere non-use of that easement or whatever kind of abandonment they're- they're arguing about that easement is not- non-use will not get you abandonment on an express easement. Uh, because it's like saying, I live on a corner, right? I have two driveways to my house. I only use one. I don't ever use the other one, it's not convenient for me. But that doesn't mean I lose the right to use it. It's recorded in the public records that I have a house, I have a driveway and all that. I got two driveways. So, these people had two property rights. Now, I'm not arguing about the prescriptive easement issue. I think- I think- I don't think anybody's arguing that they don't have one. They have a prescriptive easement right and they have an express easement right. And these are their property rights that they- they have. They're alienable, just like any other right you may have. And one was taken away from them, and they want to be heard on it. And they thought that they were being represented here by two individuals about that. And now, they find out they're not, and their views haven't been put before the board in their arguments, and they would like to be heard.
Thank you. Mr. Peterman, would you like to say something else?
Yeah, I apologize, but I feel obligated to follow up. Uh, the first thing I wanted to follow up on is something that Mr. McKinley kind of struck on, which was the timing issue. If Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird in fact represented these folks, then the appeal is dismissed. If they didn't represent these folks, and I appreciate the candor, these folks weren't aware of Mr. Kramer and Laird until approximately two months ago. Their right to appeal, if they weren't represented by Kramer and Laird, expired long before that. So they don't have a right to appeal because they didn't appeal within thirty days of the issuance of the development order unless Kramer and Laird appealed for them, and if they did, that appeal has been dismissed. So it's- it's the same end result either way. The other thing, obviously, not- don't want to belabor it, but this has absolutely nothing to do with a class action lawsuit. Those are a bunch of rules that have nothing to do with the issues that are before you today. And that's the last thing. The only issue before you today is the Kramer and Laird appeal, and the rest of these issues about easements and rights and quality of life issues have nothing to do with that appeal. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anybody else like to speak for or against? Motion to close?
Motion to close, comment, discussion?
Second? Second? All of them, aye? Discussion?
I think, uh, ultimately, if they were represented by Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer, then Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer settled for them. If they weren't represented by Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer, then they missed their opportunity to file their appeal. Um, I think it's unfortunate, if that's the case. Uh, they may have some sort of action against Mr. Laird or Mr. Kramer if they-
Right.
Didn't, uh, if they told them they were representing them and then they did something that wasn't in their best interest, but we really can't do anything about that, that I can see. Uh, I feel bad with them.
Yeah.
I don't, uh, know. Is there anything else? From our standpoint, the appeal, they- they brought an appeal to the county, and then they withdrew it.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of over with.
I agree.
I agree.
I'm with you.
I'm- I'm a bit at a loss as to what action we really should take because this is no longer before us, so-
Well, I- I think, uh, because of the nature and the- and the facts that have been borne out, I think, uh, an affirmative action by this board, one way or the other, would be appropriate.
Right, I- I agree with that.
But if- if the board's decision is that the matter has been, uh, properly withdrawn or dismissed by Mr. Kramer and Mr. Laird, then a motion to that effect, or, you know, whatever motion you- you as a board feel is appropriate.
So we would need a- need a motion as to, if I can form these words right, we would need a motion to affirm Mr. Peterman's client, affirm- to affirm the-
I- I think you would either, uh, you would just either- and you don't have to affirm his client, but you can just, uh, make a motion that the appeal has, uh, been withdrawn.
Has withdrawn.
Except, maybe accept the withdrawal.
Right.
Something in that effect, you know?
And deny any continuance? I'm sorry, and deny any type of continuance?
Well, I think if you do that, it goes without saying.
Yeah, if we go along with that. Anybody? I can't.
I make a motion to, uh, accept the withdrawal of the appeal.
There you go.
Second?
All- all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If the- the appeal has been withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman, um, before we get into the others, do you want to- I know Mr. Johnson usually makes the announcement since there is four.
That's what I was about to suggest.
Oh, yeah, that's- thanks, Mark. I'm sorry. Uh, ladies and before we get going on, being there are- are only four of us. To win- to win tonight, you have to have a majority rule.
No, you have to have a unanimous.
Oh, unanimous, I'm sorry. Unanimous. As you can see, I'm not the chairman of the thing.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and, uh, jump in, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me.
Please.
Uh, according to our, uh, land development code, um, we normally seat seven members on this board. Uh, and we do not have seven members, obviously, tonight. The, uh, the code also says that for an affirmative action by this board, it takes four members to vote in the affirmative. Therefore, since we only have four members, you would have to have a unanimous vote of, uh, based on, uh, any decision by this board. If it's three to one, even if it's a majority for, uh, your request, it would fail for lack of having four votes. So, uh, what we normally do is make that announcement, and, uh, if you would like to request a continuance of your, uh, variance request, then you can do that, and the board will vote on that. Uh, so you can maybe have a full board at the next, uh, zoning board of adjustment meeting. Uh, that's up to you as the applicant. Uh, you don't have to request it. We can go tonight, but we want to make that known that if, uh, if you would like that- that continuance, uh, this is the time to request that. So with that being said, it does- do any of the other variance requests that are scheduled for tonight, do any of those applicants wish to ask for a continuance?
I have a question. If- if we go ahead, it- it doesn't pass, can we come back again?
No, sir, it'll be over.
Call number two.
Oh, we're ready. Uh, let me see, the next one up is, uh, Lot One, Block D, Magnolia cottages. Were the- were the people representing them?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Darrell Burgess, B-U-R-G-I-S, and I have been sworn. Um, I represent the applicant. We- I'm with Emerald Coast Associates, and this is our client in the development. We are requesting that this one lot, and I do wish to clarify it, is only this one lot, be granted a variance from a fifteen-foot front setback to a ten-foot front setback. Uh, this is due to a construction layout error, um, and there are just a few points I wish to make and try to do so concisely. First, this is a planned unit development, so our client always had- First, this is a planned unit development, so our client always had the initial ability to vary the setbacks. And this, the setbacks in Phase One are all five feet. In Phase Two, there's a fifteen-foot front setback, but the remaining sides and rear are also five feet. This is the first lot in Phase Two that we feel the transition from Phase One into Phase Two, from five foot to what this would be ten foot on the first lot, into fifteen foot for the front setbacks, would be in harmony and acceptable. The application in general makes some questions that basically ask if this request would increase or detract in value for this lot parcel or any of the surrounding parcels. And the answer to that, in our opinion, is no because the original developer is my client and still owns all the lots in Phase Two. And he's also the contractor acting as the builder for these lots. So, any net gain or detraction for this particular parcel or any of the surrounding parcels would equally net zero for him. So, there's no motive in that respect for requesting this variance. This really is an innocent mistake. I know we are asking for your consideration. As soon as it was discovered, it was disclosed and we made this application. The photos we included with the application were taken at the time of, of discovery. And they should reveal the fact that, you know, this was too far along in construction to make any alterations that could possibly bring this into compliance. This really is the only way to, to fix this issue. And I am asking for your decision to find favorable in this particular request. And if you have any questions at this point, I'll be happy to answer, or try to answer.
Did, um, once y'all found out there was an error and everything, did y'all, did you notify the client? Did he stop construction at that time?
We absolutely notified the client immediately. We made application in time to be on the, what would have been last month's Board of Adjustment meeting. Unfortunately, there was, there was no meeting held. I don't know why, but that's beside the point. We did continue. We understand somewhat of our own, at our own risk, but we didn't, we didn't halt construction. No, sir.
Okay. And it was just, excuse me, it was just a layout error instead of doing like in Phase One, you're doing five? You just went and did five in Phase Two?
Well, actually, actually, there was a consideration at one point in 2013 of eight. And we developed a plan for ten-foot front setbacks. We inadvertently used that, both ourselves and even somewhat the client were under that impression. But the PUD documents that are on file and govern this are a fifteen-foot setback. And they will be adhered to in the future for the remainder of lots.
But your idea of, of transition is, is pretty good fallback. It's not a bad idea.
Well, and I will add that in our certified mail-out, I received no opposition. This is a private, self-contained community. It's one road in, one road out. That, it, that really would not affect either of the adjacent subdivisions. This is internal to itself. The developer is in favor of this. And as I say, he is the owner right now of all the adjacent lots. So, there's, the motive for this is purely to fix, you know, what is an innocent error.
How far along is the house now?
We were granted a framing inspection. It's due for a permanent power inspection, subject to the outcome here tonight. It's probably eighty percent complete.
So, so if you didn't get a favorable night tonight, it would be detrimental to your client to have to fix this.
Yes, sir, it would.
Anybody got any questions?
What is it, about half of the front porch? Is that what it?
Yes, sir, it would be. And structurally, that wouldn't really work to try to make any alteration to, to correct that.
It's tied into the structure of the initial house?
Yes, sir. And the photos should, that were included in the package should depict that.
Is there a foundation inspection or something that comes into play where you get an inspection as far as you're starting that? I mean, like, before you start putting the walls on and everything like that, when you put your footprint there? Or did that make it and then the porch was not on it at that point or something?
This, and I'm, forgive me, I'm not exactly familiar with the sequence of individual home construction and the, and the various inspections. This was discovered at the time of the foundation survey that was submitted for the framing inspection. Now, I, I believe that does allow you to go vertical from the layout, but not continue your wiring and drywall and insulation to enclose. But again, that's a little out of my expertise.
Took your words right out of my mouth.
Mr. Burgess, the, one of the criteria the board has to look at is must be proof of an unnecessary hardship as it relates to the variance request. And what do you claim is the hardship here for the applicant?
Well, the marketability, the ability to complete, the...
And let me, and I'll just read, states that the hardship cannot be self-created, that it must be established on the basis of application of the code and that it cannot be related necessarily to, you know, lack of knowledge, you know, that we purchased it and we, or we did this, we didn't have knowledge and now we're asking. Because that's going to be, as I said, one of the criteria that this board has to establish in its order. I just want to know, so, so it's in the record, what the applicant's answer is to, I guess, to that question for the board.
Okay. And I, and I do understand that. My client did not create the hardship in as much as maybe, you know, we did in it, in the error. The hardship would really be the unmarketability of the, the inability to ever occupy market, market or occupy this particular home. That would be my, my best answer at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. Someone else?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Ham, you're up.
Good evening. I think this is a pretty straightforward case. There was an error made. And just based on the evidence that you've heard, I think you just need to determine if they've met the hardship clause. That's all. Staff does not have any concerns. Anything else?
Is there any opposition from anybody here?
No.
All right. Okay. Would anybody else like to speak for or against? Nobody? Motion to close?
I move that the public discussion portion be closed.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add a bit of information? This particular issue involves more than just a setback. It also involves encroachment into preservation on the, that's recorded on the plat. We have met with Mr. Burgess. And he has a plan for a less than minor development order to relocate the preservation into common area that's out in front of this particular lot that's central to the development. There's plenty of similar vegetative community that, that can be relocated to protect. And he's prepared to replat, to remove the location of the preservation that's on this particular lot in the front that has been impacted. And we would do that through a restoration plan that would essentially claim the same community that still exists in a different part of the development.
Okay.
So, this is, this is more complicated than just a setback error. But it's one that we think we have a, a plan to remedy that will be at least as good as the original development approval.
Go ahead.
It won't actually require replanting anything.
Have, have they already applied to, to begin the replat?
Uh, we've had the pre-application for both the less than minor and replat earlier today.
They started the process.
Yes, that process has begun. We don't have the applications yet, but we have to have the pre-app as the first step and that did occur earlier today.
Good deal.
If we decide to grant the variance, would we need to stipulate in there that it be subject to your...
I would recommend that, yes, you include that.
You'd like to see that?
And if you get to that point, I'd be happy to suggest some possible language. Thank you.
Would, would you be opposed to the possible language that he would like to add in where you're doing the preservation areas?
No, sir. It would be, I'd be happy to include that it be subject to the less than minor application, less than minor development order. Yes, sir.
Okay, where were we?
Motion to close.
Motion to close?
Yes. I move that the public discussion portion be closed.
Second.
All aye?
Aye.
All right. You're up.
I don't see any, any problems with this, no objections at all. So, my recommendation is to approve the variance request.
Is that a motion, Mr. Man?
You know, I think it is. I move that the variance request be approved.
I second it.
Um, let's, with, yes, with the...
With the language.
With the language. Yeah, let's...
Less than minor development order? Was that the...
Yes, sir. If we could add the condition of the approval of a minor development order to address the restoration of preservation, which is actually a relocation of preservation and a replating to remove the impacted preservation on this lot.
That's a lot of words there, Matt.
Okay, well then, a less than minor development order for the restoration and a replat of the impacted area. Is that shorter?
That's, that's fine.
So, and just so we're clear, so the variance would be granted to the extent that the replat, the minor replat is approved, correct? All right, just so, so it's clear. Because if the minor replat is not approved, then the variance would not attach. So, I, I just want to make sure that the board understands that, so.
Can I make another?
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion up?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that the variance be, a variance request be approved on the condition that the less than minor development order concerning the preservation area and the replat be approved.
That sounds great.
I still second it.
All aye?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Burgess, granted your preference.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. The next one up is the cabins, Country cabins Phase Two for variance. Have you been sworn, sir?
At the beginning of the meeting. Yeah.
State your name.
We're asking for...
You need to state your name.
Oh, my name is Douglas Portoff. You have to walk me through this. I'm done with all.
We're all learning tonight.
Okay. So...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
What type of variance? What are, what are you asking for?
Um, we want to rebuild a wall of our house on the same location that it's on now because they didn't state when they built the house originally. And, you know, in order to bring a house into code and stay on the same footprint and not expand, mess with drainage or anything like that, we'd just like to put it on the same location. But we'd like to make it a bit taller because right now it's an A-frame, so it comes down to nothing at the outside. So, we originally got a, a plan for a dormer on the one side. But then, as we went through plans and whatnot, there's too many things wrong with the house. It doesn't make sense economically to just do a dormer. It makes sense to redo the whole roof. So, we just take the wall that's not encroaching as well as the encroaching wall and just boost them up. And then we have also a little bit more floor space. But the main thing we want is just to be able to replace that wall on the same location.
So, you're for, you're asking for a foot and four-inch setback? I mean, variance? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, and that's currently where the wall is, yes.
Okay. So, at the end of the day, the new setback that there on your lot would be six feet, two inches, correct?
I don't know, I don't know the terminology for new setback. I mean, it is there. Apparently, it's over the existing setback.
Right.
We just want to be able to put it there again. So, if that's a new setback, if that's what that means, yes.
I'm with you.
Okay.
So, you're encroaching a little bit now. I got you.
Yes.
The existing wall is and you want to replace it in the same footprint.
In the same location.
Got you, sir. All right, bear with me one minute while I look at this.
Have you sent out all your, your...
Notices, yes.
Anybody, anybody say anything around the neighborhood?
No.
Nobody care?
No, nobody cared. A couple of people made some mention that they would come speak on our behalf. But then, of course, they were busy when the talking, but I wouldn't either.
What does this mean?
This is another item. Mr. Chairman, you have a photo of a diocese, a picture marked title number three. It's supposed to do with this. Okay. Do you know what, did you drop this off?
Yeah, what that is, is where the wall is actually pulling apart from the, the sidewall is pulling apart from the end wall.
You need to fix it.
Is this the part that's encroaching now?
Yeah, it's separated by that.
No, I'm talking about, is this part right here what's encroaching right now?
Is that the wall that's over?
Is this what's over the setback line?
Is that the one that you're replacing?
The one on the left.
This one over here?
The pink part.
The pink part is the one that's encroaching.
The dark wall is the one that's separated from the pink wall. I ran out of print, please.
But which wall are you replacing?
The pink wall.
The pink wall? Do you have a, do you have a current survey of your house that shows the encroachment?
Yeah.
It's in, it's in their package, like, your last page. Is that really?
This?
Survey, it's a site, you know, site.
Yeah, if you can manage to read it.
Okay.
If you look at the southwest corner of the house, not to, not to include the deck, southwest corner of the house, there's a little line there and it's too small for me to read, but it says six feet and whatever, six feet, two inches or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. Would, is anybody got anything to add?
Are you, oh, I got a question for counsel then, for him, I guess. If we granted him the variance, would it be for the whole lot, or would it be just right here, where, I mean, would he be able to go back in the backyard and build him a little shed close to the fence also?
No, I mean, the side setback would be adjusted throughout the entire lot.
So he could put a little shed in.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be so beside it, yeah, if you're
If we were to limit your variance to just where your house currently is, would that be okay with you?
Absolutely. Yeah, we don't want to build anything bigger or add anything.
But I mean, like, you don't need to, in the back also, or in the front also, just where the actual house is.
Or, you know, I would imagine that you need to, a foot, a foot deep, because it has to gradually get out of the way, but, yeah, whatever.
You just got a problem there, don't you? Anybody else? Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this variance?
I don't think I have any surprises on this one at all. This one has been pretty much vetted through planning department, it is on a coastal dune lake, so they are not going to be furthering it any, any, what am I trying to say, they're, they're not going to be creating any issues that would be in violation of our coastal dune lake regulations. So they've pretty much gone through all the motions in the planning department for building approval, and this was a recommendation that they come to the zoning board, so.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you if staff had a problem with it being on the lake, if there was an issue there, so.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
All aye?
Second. Second.
Second.
I'm learning.
We'll make the chairman out of you, yeah.
I hear you.
Aye.
Aye.
No concerns.
Okay, discussion?
I'd like to see it, where we make our motion where it didn't include the whole lot, just, just
Make it.
Okay, I make a motion to grant the variance for the requested six foot, two inch setback within the own, the existing footprint of the house, so that it doesn't continue along the full length of the lot, but just where the house is currently existing.
Did you get that, Ms. Karen?
Yeah.
Yeah. I make a motion to grant the variance on that one side to six foot, two inches, with the exception that it just be for the current, currently placed footprint of the house, so that it doesn't just give him a full variance to construct other buildings or whatever.
Yes?
Second.
All, all aye? Aye. Got your variance?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Enjoy your fallen away wall.
Thank you so much.
The last one is the Andante condominium?
Yes.
Am I saying that correctly?
Andante.
Andante, what?
Andante.
Andante. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Colleen Sax with Dunleff and Shipman, and I have been sworn, good evening.
All aye.
We are here representing on the Andante condominium association in connection with a request for a variance to reduce a side setback from fifteen feet to ten feet, and she asked me to hold this up.
Okay, I was gonna say, there's a tripod over there, she wanted to
I think it would take us longer to get that open than the presentation will probably take. What we are asking is for a variance so that they can put a restroom in the area of the pool amenity. When the condominium was initially built, they had not put a restroom in there, this is a family oriented complex, and there are children using the pool, and it's a hassle for the people to take the kids up to the condo unit every time they need to use the pool, and just for, you know, sanitary reasons, it's a good idea to have a restroom with your pool amenity. It's thirty-one feet here at the base of the pool amenity, but where the building ends up here, it's only eight and a half feet, and in order to fit the restroom in, we need to encroach, and we've reduced the size of the restroom so that the encroachment is not large, but we do need to encroach into the fifteen foot setback by approximately five feet. Keep in mind, we still will have the ten foot landscape buffer, and that will remain so that the neighboring property would have the benefit of the landscape buffer, the only thing that would happen is just this very small area would have the encroachment into the setback, into the fifteen foot setback. It's a hardship, because when the building was constructed, we have postal scrub oak on the side, so there was preservation. Other condos that are in that area didn't have that same requirement because they were built earlier, but because of when this one was built, they had the requirement for the preservation. So it's placed as far east on the lot as possible, which takes us right up to the fifteen feet up here, so we've got all the preservation here, and then because of the dune structure by this condominium, instead of the condominium being so that it runs parallel to the side lot lines, it is, has been placed at an angle on the lot, which creates this triangle, and that is to help with preservation of the dunes. So those are the things that were required, and they're the reasons why there is a hardship that was not a hardship caused by the people that are asking tonight for the variance. So all we're asking, and we can't, cannot move this structure closer in here because we have a door that's required for ingress and egress, and we have a condominium unit that has a window that would be blocked by the structure if it's not placed where it shows on here. So are there any questions?
How big of a restroom you gonna make?
The restroom is, I think it's, and it's in your packet, it is five feet by, I think it's a fifteen feet, approximately fifteen feet, but it's, it's only gonna be five feet deep. It'll, the entrance of it will run pretty much, there's a wall that surrounds this, and it will run kind of parallel to the wall with the entrance of it coming out into the pool amenity area, and most of it being placed behind the wall into that setback. It's, it's a very standard hardship issue, and you'll see both from our, our letter that is in your packet, as well as the staff report, that it meets all the criteria for a variance in this case.
Anybody got any question?
No, sir.
Joe? Thank you, Ms. Sax.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tim Brown with Planning and Development. Unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, this request does meet the criteria for a variance, staff recommends approval. You should have a letter that was handed out, which is a letter of support from the adjacent property owners, so, you know, we don't see an issue with it at all. I mean, I think it's very clear in this instance, and Colleen explained, there really is a hardship because of the way they had to build, build the building.
Got you. Yeah, any questions for Mr. Brown? Anybody else like to speak for or against? Yes, sir.
I did not swear in earlier, do I need to do that?
Yes, sir, you do.
If you're ready, I can answer, you swear affirm to the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is, how you got?
I do, definitely. My name is Philip Walker, property owner at Arcadia Town Homes, which is directly across the street, and we share in the private beach walkover that is directly next to this property. Part of it's just barely, I think there's about fifteen feet currently between the walkover easement and the wall that they're coming out, an additional five feet. Spoken and shared this stuff with all our owners, and told them what they plan to do and showed them, Mr. Williams was kind enough to send me information on that, and, you know, as long as the beach walkover is not impeded upon, and it doesn't appear that that's gonna cause any issue for us at all with that private easement that we currently use to get to the beach, then we had no issues with it. Again, we have eight owners in Arcadia complex that use that walkover, plus I think Magnolia also uses it, but we had no, no, no issues with that at all.
Good.
So, yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alfred Branch, I was sworn earlier, I represent the owners of Magnolia, now Waterhouse, Unit 305, I'm also on the board of the homeowner association there, I think I'm the one that, you have a letter of support from me in your packet. In fact, our condominium is in direct line of sight of the private easement, we have no problem with it, we support Andante's desire to put a restroom there, and not aware of any, again, given the agenda item number one, I'm not here to represent anybody else personally, and would not do so, but I am on the board, we've talked to other board members and other neighbors, and no one, and our associate manager's here, he likewise has, we've had no opposition and support on Andante's request for the variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Public?
Public discussion.
I keep forgetting that.
Second.
All aye?
Aye.
All aye. Anybody got anything to say?
I don't.
Pretty self-explanatory.
No, we're there.
Motion?
Motion to approve the variance.
Second.
Second. Second.
How y'all vote?
Aye.
Aye. Y'all got your variance?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. What's next?
Yeah, we do have one additional item of business related to our venue for the next meeting. We've got a court cases scheduled for three weeks in this room, and the judge wants to sequester the evidence in this room, which means we won't be able to go in and out.
I've always wanted to do that, ever since I watched Perry Mason in nineteen sixty-four. Order. I saw Perry Mason there. Every night. It's the only thing on when I get home. Well, but just to continue that item, we won't have this room available to us, the TDC has been kind enough to offer us their boardroom right across the street, where we've got some audio visual capability. What if we just get a different date? I would, would y'all, would y'all, could we not use the fun?
This room is actually gonna be occupied.
We can, let's go to the fun.
This room is actually gonna be occupied for three consecutive weeks. Now, if we have a
What if we go to the fun?
Well, the problem is, we're not gonna have time to republish, or even people won't have time to resend notices between now and the meeting day, is that right?
Well, no, it's, it's May twenty-five, so we got four weeks.
We might consider that.
We've got time for notices. I mean, to me personally, I mean
It's up to y'all, and we'll meet anywhere, but we just can't
You know, but I think probably some of the concern is, most of the variance requests and most of the issues that we have are usually down here in the south part of the county, so they will have to drive up there, but
Who cares?
I know that many of you drive down from
It's twelve
Part of the county.
It's twelve minutes from my house to I-ten.
I would prefer to see some of them in the fun.
Well, I think the other issue is
Because we don't, we don't actually go out and look at the property.
We could, we could probably have it in the commission meeting.
Is that where it works? Okay. Could do that.
Personally, I don't care, doesn't matter to me, I'm here to serve everybody, you know.
And staff will certainly accommodate the wishes of the board, so I think it's up to y'all.
Matt, you, you name it, what do you want to do?
Karen, where you want to be?
Yeah, Karen?
Can you ask closer to home?
There you go. It's twelve minutes either way for me.
Could we, would it be appropriate for a motion to change the venue for the next meeting and
Yeah, sure.
Direct us to properly advertise that?
Okay, make the motion to change venue from South Walton to, to the fun springs.
For the main meeting.
At the courthouse, at the courthouse.
Wait, you make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
And somebody else?
I'll second it.
John? But I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you very much.
The other thing we have are the minutes from February, since we skipped last month.
I can't sign them, can I?
Yeah, you can sign them. I mean, we do have Mr. Johnson's name on there, unless there's any changes.
Well, I can write Joe Johnson just as good as him.
I'm sure he wouldn't want you to do that.
No.
Did, did any of you notice any issues with the minutes?
I hadn't even seen them, were they in the front?
I didn't.
I didn't.
I moved that the minutes be accepted.
I second it.
Well, let me read what I'm, uh, no, we got a, got a misspelled, we got a typo, they got H-E-Y-W-A-R-D instead of H-A-Y-W. I'm, I'm just kidding.
That isn't correct. One other thing while, while I keep looking at that, just to be thinking about it, at the next meeting, I think some of you are here, but we're, you're gonna need to determine who your chair and your vice chair will be for the remainder of the year, it's supposed to be done on a yearly basis. Mr. Valet, Colleen, he's no longer on the board, he was the vice chair, obviously Joe's been acting as chair, but, you know, this is an opportunity if somebody wants to step up and be the, be the chairman or be the vice chair, but that's not an action that you're gonna need to take tonight, but, just be thinking about it. Scott's doing such a good job, I mean, trying to wrestle with that.
So Colleen's off?
Yes, sir, my understanding is he had requested I have to be appointed again, so.
Shouldn't Joe sign this, being that he was, he was acting chair when this was going on?
No, I mean, we're approving it at tonight's meeting, so if you want to, you can either strike through his name and just print your name underneath and sign, and that should be sufficient.
They have to
Yeah, assuming that you guys, there was a first and a second, that's right.
Yes.
Did, have we held the vote?
Yep.
Then we would ask that that be done.
There we go.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you'll ask for the, if you'll call the question.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 See, I'm learning.
We will have a new member, we had a new member appointed at the last BCC meeting, it's architect Jeff Chick, he was unable to be at this meeting on such short notice this week, but he will be here next week, I mean, next month, in the fun.
In the fun.
In the fun.
I hear you.
I move the meeting be adjourned.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Aye, all, all four?
Aye.
Aye. See, I did. Perry Mason, baby, Perry Mason.
I'm gonna call Joe, let him know that Scott
Phil, you're like, hey, you're not an idiot. You gotta watch that, man, you keep taking care of that one.
I'm not.
You're not.
There you go.
Oh, okay. I might say you're a liar. But I
Yeah, 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 I know, my personal experience.